Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm here to speak about the general bylaw 14-300, which is about Burina's Rules of Order, pretty much from my perspective anyway, and about rules of order in general. First, I want to start off by just saying why I have a vested interest in this. I'm not an expert, but I have been... Sorry, I'm just gonna try and get this to work. There we go. Yeah, I've been using Burina's Rules of Order for about a decade formally. Been chairing lots of meetings and giving workshops using these specific rules of order. I'm working on research for a book towards a newer version of Burina's Rules of Order. So these are the reasons why I'm here and why I want to talk about this. So a basic overview of my presentation are the city's bylaws are underpinned by these rules of order, which is why I'm bringing this up. It's not something we talk about very often, but it's right in the very front part of that bylaw, and it says, "These are the rules of order that underpin what we do here in terms of civic governance." My other concern is that bylaws and code of conduct are not enforced by committee chairs or committee members. I'll talk about that a little bit. And then a bit about recommendations to city council about what we could do. So right in section 2.2 of the bylaw, it said...I won't read the whole thing out, but what I'll focus on at the bottom there is an underlying bit, which says that, "With reference to the parliamentary rules as contained in the most recent addition of Burina's Rules of Order." And so I want to kind of pause on that point about an addition. What does that mean? So my concern is that there is a parliamentary Burina's Rules of Order, there's a General Assembly's Burina's Rules of Order, there's a municipal version. What are we talking about? We don't say. So that's confusing in terms of trying to understand what legally underpins codes of conduct, rules of order, how you chair things. There are these four that I'm pointing to. There are more, but these four here, it could all mean any one of these four things, and I have no idea. The second part of my point here is that the municipal act does define some things very bare bones, things like you can't not vote, right? So if you decide that you don't want to vote on something, then you're recorded in the negative. Things like that are set up there, so you don't need a rules of order for those things. But the majority of things are set up in Burina's. It's just not clear what direction the city is going in, like what they're referring to when they say that. In terms of some basic points that are in there about things not being enforced, because I only have five minutes, so I'm gonna kind of skip ahead. There's two things I notice consistently that just aren't enforced by chairs, and they're right in the procedural bylaw in 14-300 and 7.2, number F and G, that people are allowed to speak on any matter other than the matter being debated. So it's not always clear when there's a matter being debated necessarily what specifically that matter is, and then if people are talking to that matter. If they suddenly veer off and start having a tangential point about something else, that's not necessarily stopped. Also, speaking on a matter longer than five minutes without leave of council or committee, that happens. I think everyone here has seen that. It's not like it's something I have to delve into too much, but it's right in the bylaw 14-300. These are rules that say you can't do these things, and they're not followed. So I'm pointing those out. So my recommendations, I guess, to council are...or sorry, on the point of recommendations to council, I've not seen this committee make a recommendation about this bylaw and about these procedural kinds of changes to council. So, you know, I'm concerned that there's not an ongoing reviewing of that bylaw, making sure it's modern, updated, and that other bylaws are versioned properly. So right now, what happens is, for instance, if an update is made to a bylaw, if the update exists in a separate place showing the update, but they're not collapsed into a dated, versioned, easy-to-read bylaw for citizens or residents to read. So these things, again, are all contained in other rules the city's governed by that are just not being followed up on. So my suggestion is work with me to fix this. I'm happy to work offline, you know, with people and figure out, here are some target areas that could really improve the bylaw, give you suggestions, have you pass a motion to council. So that's my suggestion. That's my delegation. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Cameron. Please, would you stay within the five-minute rule? Thank you. Sir, the question's of the presenter. That's the first.
Well, we do have that five-minute rule. We used to enforce it with the technology we had here, the microphone, kind of every five minutes. But the problem with the software to recognize second-hand speakers and put them right at the top of the queue, we believe that we have the upgrade happening in December. That's a glitch or some fix where we'll now recognize second-hand speakers and put them down to the bottom, which means that council wishes we could back that. It gets problematic, too, because when someone's asking a question, should they...they should not allow them to try to answer questions in their speech, if you will, or give me their comments, that's when we get them to the five minutes. Probably this new software will help fix that. So that's the difference between those rules. I was also in the department for this work.
Hmm. I'll make a couple academic distinctions, but like, you know, Burina's Rules of Order are Canadian. They're parliamentary rules of order initially, and set up that way. Robert's Rules of Order are American. The major points of difference aren't outstanding, but there are things like point of information versus, you know, that doesn't exist in Burina's Rules of Order and exists in Robert's. Like, there's fine points of distinction, but the point is that Burina's are set up in a parliamentary system. They're Canadian, and they're designed for...and were heavily researched for intentional use here, middle of the 20th...sorry, beginning of the 20th century.
And what's your addition to this?
Better city governance, better access for residents to versioned bylaws, all that. That matters.
Do you remember Mark's position on the software?
No, I've never even heard of it, to be honest with you. Ever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Another question, presenter? That's the first.
Cameron, thank you. You and I had a talk, a talk about this months ago. It's nice to see that you're here on this day that I'm here on another item, but when I saw your agenda, I was interested, and it was a great presentation. Well, within five minutes, as the chair has noted, we try to do our best, and certainly it can be really a time, and I've been in the middle of it particularly, like this public works for some strange reason. But you mentioned parliamentary a few times, and more now being Canadian. Yeah, when I watch even Queens Park provincial politics and the antics that go on there, and even federally, Parliament Hill, these debates are going, there is a lot of yelling and screaming and back and forth, and hard to, when you're watching CPAC even follow along. Would you admit or agree through you, Chair, that actually they could take a few lessons from city council here in Hamilton in terms of just generally decorum? I know at times we can start to talk over ourselves, but it seems very consistent in the higher levels of government. Are they using the same rules of order?
Yeah, I'm happy to say something about that. I think it's hard to compare those two things. The contexts are very different. So the parliamentary rules of order were set up to work specifically in a parliamentary system, which has its own cultural, you know, cultural biases, which is based on a British system, which is not the same as the municipal system. In fact, Burina goes to some pains in 1918 to create a section five in the Rules of Order. Well, he doesn't, he's dead, I think, by that time, but, you know, there's a 1918 fifth section about municipalities, and that's specifically structured under the British North America Act. Like, they're just different contexts entirely. So I don't think you compare those things and say that we're better behaved here than they are there. It's just not in the same context, because those parliamentary, those governing parliamentary rules of order aren't really intended to be used here, right, in the same spirit. They're specifically designed for parliament.
So they don't use a Queens Park or a Ottawa or a Burina's Rules of Order?
They do, and I guess what I'm saying is that Burina's Rules of Order don't come in one shape and size, right? So there's Burina's Rules of Order for parliament, and there's one that I think most people use. If you're in a union environment, you might see, use the General Assemblies chapter, which tells you how you might work in a union environment or a general assembly. If you're in a municipality, a lot of the rules are cultural. If they're based in Burina's, which these are, then you might be using the 1918 version. I don't know, and that's part of my question to council, which is, that's something that should be clearly contemplated and understood. What is it you mean by that? And instead of saying, I think, to be honest, instead of saying, "Hey, we're relying on Burina's Rules of Order," be specific. What things in Burina's Rules of Order aren't in this procedural bylaw, and what can we just write here that we're following? That simplifies it and makes it easier for chairs to run meetings.
Thank you, Counselor Bartrich.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My questions are actually for staff, if you would first of all, for that one. Thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate your raising this.
Thank you, Counselor. And so I will with that ask that we, with the motion, we receive the presentation by Counselor Bartrich. Thank you, Madam Counselor. Anyway, thank you. All in favor?
Very.
And now, questions to staff? Counselor Bartrich.
Yes, thank you. And Rose, you indicated that you wanted to say something earlier, but so, you know, feel free to incorporate your comments into my questions or your response. Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if you'd get some clarification on the last time that the bylaw was reviewed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, for you, typically, the bylaw is reviewed once a term of council, so we're coming up to that. Next year will be our final term of council, and the procedural bylaw will be reviewed and considered by the standing.
All right, thank you. So just to clarify, then, the bylaw does get reviewed, updated, so every term, and we will be coming up to it next term. So it is that we do review, but it's not that it's never been reviewed. And I guess my last question is, through Madam Chair, is just comments on the presentation? The differences that we're talking about here? Because I think that's when I saw you put your hand up.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify, and Cameron did, that Burina's is Canadian, probably Charles's and Burina's is American. I believe the intention, why Burina's is built in the procedural model, is that if there isn't something that is specified in the council's procedural model, then we rely on Burina's as our source of reference.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, one of the previous speakers, counselors, before me indicated that the system was going to have a bit of an overhaul, and I'm thinking that was in 2018. Will that be done before we do the review of this bylaw in council? Or do you think that that's going to resolve issues, or just your comments, please?
Right, Madam Chair, for you, the new agenda management system. Looking forward to January, she's more intimately involved than I am, so feel free to jump in if you have something. But yes, the intention is that the new software will allow for a second-time speaker list, as Counselor Bartrich had mentioned. The five-minute period is still in our procedural model. You'll note that, you'll notice that your microphones do close on after five minutes, but you just automatically press them back on. So that already is in place. We are managing my system as well, so we all need compliance with our procedural laws.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing is it's really up to us to monitor our committee members as we go forward. For you, Madam Chair, anything to add to that with your knowledge of the system?
We actually didn't have a meeting. Okay, and we were talking a bit about that. And when you turn off your mic, you have that to go to the bottom of the queue. So we aren't looking at cutting the council's off at five minutes, because that causes all those problems. So you will see a timer on your display, and you have to, the chair, to say, "We now take ten minutes," or summarize what we do, or delegations, or what we fight. Okay, similar to that, and as we...there is no resolution to, if you go older by minute, you're cut off, you get you back into that list, unless you press, but again, it's...so we're gonna have to change it for the councillors as well, so we'll...
So there'll be a learning curve, is what I'm hearing. Thank you very much.
Counselor first.
So Jen, the system will be installed in December when we do this council, if it's overall?
Yes.
And so we will, if we want, have the ability to have the microphone on like five minutes. The reason we took it out was because if someone hit the microphone again, the break between the left button and the bottom, like, or down to the second speaker, so that will all set to go, and then the person will get back in.
Right, but we won't have to cut off about a minute, so only because that's what happens with the speaker list, if you go down to the bottom. So it'll be up to yourselves to monitor your own timing, because you're on the seat, and the chair to monitor the members' timing.
As I understand it, this was here, though, is I understand that the system can still turn off, but we chose something that to make up?
No, I have to turn my one so that we can continue speaking. That's how it works. I have to...
Here, you should, down here. Okay. I'd say, there's two ladies here, this is...
So lucky.
It broke my turn. So you can't, you can't just shut the switch, turn it back on, so it shuts off on the back there for five minutes, and then anybody who wants to go back on has to go down to the second speaker list.
If all of the council decides to do, and if that's what you want to do it, you can do that.
Okay, now, how much do you mean, if we decide to turn it back on, you know, we practically have a couple hours of council that we've talked about. And how do you handle when someone's asking questions that's not part of the five minutes?
Oh, and that's why we left it that it's actually the council to turn off their own mic. We don't want to have to be in that situation where cutting off the other's mic when they're asking questions of staff, because, and we're gonna have to learn as well, that when you now, when you ask a question to staff, you want to turn off the mic and turn it back on, or you have to make sure you can let it on, what they need to make sure to have the question.
So if staff are responding to our questions, we have to leave the microphone on, otherwise it'll cut us out.
Right. So if we're looking at all the scenarios, we should make sure that we've covered them.
So the five-minute rule's still down to do as we want. It's still got, it's got the voting down, the second-hand speakers list, and you can't figure out how we can manage this question period, if the staff are responding to questions because you're using it every five minutes.
Then we have to put the procedural bylaw up in the, now, the time for questions. Now, the ten minutes, we shouldn't, sometimes, because I think we program the system to, now, the question mode, which means that we get ten minutes, rather than statements.
So remember, when, Jen, a certain counselor, he actually asked questions for two hours at one spot. I remember that. And so we haven't got this thing fully sorted out, Jen?
Well, we have to go through the system, start using it, and if there's anything that we need changed, we can do that with the contractor.
Is the software the same one that the department, they just operate with, or is it a different software?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bandy.
Thank you. So, I'm not sure these questions work, but I expect probably we can, Jen. Is that system going to have, through Madam Chair, is that system going to have a pause on it? Certainly a pause, you might, as opposed to turning it off. So would you stop the clock with a pause?
I didn't see a pause, but it's something I can ask.
Does that allow you to continue your five minutes? Are you pausing it, so the question that staff's answering would not keep up with?
I can ask that question.
So that's my first question. My next question is, I turned my mic off after I asked a question, because this system means you can't hear if your mic's on. If you turn the mic off, then the other ones are louder. So is the new system going to dress up, so that we're not going to have that problem? Do you know?
So we weren't aware of that, so we'll make sure that we do, if we have to, if we have to.
Great.
There's all different scenarios, so you...there are things that we haven't considered, okay, so it's important to look, to be back in the scene.
Well, if you got the minutes, because we sit here all the time, and have to use it, and know how it works and doesn't. So I have one more question. Is the chair able to turn the mic off?
Yes.
So if you have a problem, or someone was going on, and been asked to stop doing whatever they're doing, if necessary, the chair will turn it off? Is that who I...
Chair, what?
So many questions.
Okay, so with that, Counselor Whitehead, welcome.
Thank you. Just a question, and I don't know if you're over short, yourself, you might talk, but that's mine. There's a period of time we ask questions, and there's a period of time that you slide comments. Is that being identified, and are those pulled in for five minutes? Okay.
So a couple things, if I could, I'll just, with the chair, Counselor Bartrich, my question is, will...so we understand the timer is flashing on the speakers, so the chair doesn't need a timer up here as far as speakers?
Oh, the... There'll be a screen. Okay, screen there, for the chair. Okay, and the timer, you will not see your mic flashing, the display will be flashing of your time.
And just going back to the question that was asked earlier, is the chair able to shut the mic off? I remember we had that when we first started the system, like, how does the chair end that? Is it up here, or is it...
So it needs to be monitored, twenty-four hours monitor, okay? And such...
Are we gonna get a bigger volume?
Yes.
I can't even hold the hook down.
That was for us today, okay, and they're going, I said, we can't do anything more than there is the volume is better than now.
Thank you.
Okay, so they are making bigger volume.
Thank you. And one last question, if I could, to Rose. Rose, with regards to Cameron's presentation today, and going away knowing that we're going to have to reevaluate the 2018 procedural bylaw, our proceedings of the committee and council bylaw, would we leave it? I'm just going to ask the direction, as he's offered his assistance, but I'm not sure how appropriate that is, working from your office, unless he just submits suggestions. So I'd like to just be sure what your guidance and your words were.
Madam Chair, it would be up to the committee to make that recommendation. In the past, we worked with staff, legal staff, work staff, and input from the chair of the governance committee, and then insert suggestions for what's in this subcommittee, and then we're advanced to the standing for this position as well. So it's at your discretion if you would like input from the chair. Sorry, I don't want to see your house.
Cameron, yeah. Cameron will work with the board of commissioners. Thank you, appreciate that. So I just want to be sure, and I know we've closed off to Cameron, so there were the two items that were raised, and then, look, you made note of that now, so you have those two points. And I would assume that direction would be, if there's any other suggestions that you may have, that it'd be forwarded to the clerk or to legal, and I'll ask for that motion before. Counselor Whitehead, before that, sir?
Yeah, just going on again, did you cover off, because, you know, I've been in Calvary and Brandon, London, Ontario, they all have their procedural bylaws. So we're looking at best practices as we move forward. Are we just starting from scratch, and are we gonna specifically make that one decision?
Madam Chair, do you? No, we do look at the best practices, and we start with the model that we have in place now, and suggest that that is to make a meaningful...
Thank you. With that, Counselor Bartrich.
Yes, one last question, through Rose, or maybe, or Jen. If we're in early January, then, once a new system is installed, and this kind of the manufacturer comes to us and teaches us how to use it, and so we can take recommendations to GIC and open on council, we go back to the five minutes, how's the site's people work, how do we handle questions, and is a smaller group here getting a training session from the vendor?
We're planning on a training session before we start our new cycle in January, so we're...
All the...
January 11. Okay, we'll have, he's probably here, as well as Maclean, who will be in the other one, eight, three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, Counselor Bartrich, I can back to you with regards to any direction for the presenter today, and any further suggestions that he has.
Yes, I'll be happy to do that motion, which I believe, Jen, did you get Counselor Pearson's words, was to refer any further information to court service pertaining to reviewing of the bylaw 14-300.
Any suggestions? Second by Counselor Vandervi. Thank you. All in favor?
Very.
Thank you, everyone. And with that, now, we're going to, second delegation today is from Craig Burley. Craig, come on down here, we should just speak as well with regards to our procedures. And again, a reminder that it's a five-minute rule, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make a note at the beginning, referencing Cameron's presentation earlier and some of the by discussion afterwards. It is fundamentally the role of the chair to determine where necessary, where there has been fi...you know, where, for example, time has been taken, or the issue of how to treat time in terms of how it's seeded, if there are questions and so forth, in discussions on matters. I know that this procedural bylaw does permit that, and...but does not deal with the question of, you know, does permit questions being asked of staff during the consideration of a motion, but it doesn't, as I understand it, deal with how that is to be factored into time, either the asking of questions or the receiving of answers. So that would be something, if there is an overhaul, that probably would be worth looking at. When Cameron and I were first discussing about coming here, back, I guess, last winter was when we first began to, we're asking to get on the agenda, I thought that I'd come to talk about a couple of the specific aspects... terribly sorry. A couple of the specific aspects of this, of procedural bylaw issues, and how they present real-world risk to the city as a corporation and to you as its directors. In particular, I'm going to concentrate on the issue of voting, but always with the reminder that, right, there is, the procedural bylaw does provide that. All of council's acts, and that would include the passage of bills into bylaws, is fundamentally underpinned by its rules of order, and there is a general question as to whether bylaws passed out of order are properly passed. Now, that's a question that in almost all circumstances will be resolvable, one way or the other, but one can't guarantee, on the basis of the past jurisprudence, right, that that would be resolved necessarily in the city's favor. And one thing I would emphasize is that a mere reliance on tradition, where the procedural bylaw is said to govern order, a mere reliance on tradition may not be found sufficient by a court to determine if a bylaw was properly passed. I did a little research before coming, and this was a bit spur-of-the-moment yesterday when I thought how to make the emphasis. I found 38 cases, just under Canley, that's certainly not everything that is out there, but it has a good summation of more recent material, but I found 38 cases in Canada dealing with the question of whether a municipal bylaw was properly passed, or where the court or tribunal had to make that determination. In other words, this is a real thing that really does get challenged, and the worst part is that if there is challenge to the passage of a bylaw or bill, it will come back to bite you at the worst... to bite you at the worst possible time. It is the litigant with the most to gain or the most to lose that brings up a question like, is the bylaw properly passed? It is the person taking the hail mary or the person with, as I say, right, the most time available and dollars available to waste in court. It is when you are most vulnerable, someone will bring this up against you. I had two items to discuss about voting. The first is that voting on bills is often brought at the end of council meetings and is often accomplished in a great deal of haste. I understand. You are short of time, you wish to finish on time, and a great deal of time during meetings is taken up with talking, and often not as much taken up with business. Business can be left to the end, and business is sometimes dealt with in a hurry. Bills are read at some point, but at the point of passage, often there is an indecent haste to read off items, hear the expressed word of council, and move on very quickly. This is fraught with risk. Where it is not evident to the public as to what matters are being voted on and how, even in a circumstance where the clerk and all of you on council feel it is plain and obvious and therefore able to be signed and registered, right, by the mayor and the clerk, there will be points of challenge that come. It's not only when you're right, it's not only when you're wrong, but sometimes when you're right, that these types of ambiguities, especially to the public, come back to bite bodies. The second item is much more serious, and it's the issue of in-camera voting. I have seen committees and even the full council go into an in-camera session, come out of the session and report a vote. This is not permitted by the municipal act, it's not permitted by the open meetings bylaw, and it is genuinely fraught with risk. A vote that is not taken in public, and by taken in public, I do not mean reported, I mean where the councillors affirmatively vote for or against the item under consideration, is not a vote that corresponds to the municipal act. So where passage in camera occurs and that vote is later reported, that is a serious concern from the point of view of the municipal act as to whether bills are properly passed. I wouldn't want to comment on any specific instance, nor do I think that this is something that is insuperable for council to handle. It is merely a question of exiting the in-camera session and in public formally voting, i.e. taking the up or down where each person speaks out to have their vote recorded. Finally, I note in passing that the Office of the Ombudsman also on closed meetings has made recent recommendations to council, and I'm sure you're aware of, related to other issues in closed meetings, including the recording of closed meetings where council has been very specifically instructed that it should do so. I do think that's in your best interests. I don't want to go too far outside the ambit of my discussion of voting, and I'm mindful of my five minutes, but I did want to raise that point. Thank you all very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Craig, in our chair with the five minutes. May I allow you one minute extra?
Thank you kindly.
And then this is where it gets great, very icy, Janet sitting here. This is what happens?
Yeah.
I allowed it because you started your introductory comments into Cameron's point of these. So I watched the time, you said it was about a minute you spoke about. I'd allow you just over five minutes.
I saw your concern, and I apologize.
It's going to be very awkward and very difficult. This is the problem, you sit on this side of the people's chair, and I know my colleagues all sit in a position we understand. But to that point now, questions with the reception? Counselor Wadehead.
I could ask, one of the recommendations came from the Ombudsman for Considerations. So obviously, it's not prescription.
Yeah, exactly.
It's guidelines or recommendations was recording in-camera discussions. We've been asking the province of the chair to change the legislation to ensure that councillors have the same protections as the legislature in the context of the type of discussions that take place in camera. And until we have that protection, that is where I think there's some resistance in moving to the next step.
The issue being personal, the concern being with regards to personal liability of what is said in in-camera meetings? Yeah. And that privilege, right, there is certainly an extraordinary amount of privilege that, you know, that would adhere to such a meeting, but not having it enshrined in legislation is certainly, you know, a legitimate concern. I would underline that there would be an extraordinarily, an extraordinary degree of deference in terms of the privilege of a duly-elected member of council speaking to council in a council meeting regarding third parties, but of course, as you say, that is probably less than a statutory guarantee.
Yeah, I think, I don't, the council has what's called, they have a hybrid protection, but it's very weak, and certainly can be tested in the courts where you have absolute protection in discussions within the legislature, which isn't coming in regards to municipality. So I think, I just want to highlight the fact that there is, I don't think it's a resistance to taking, it's just what do we do with this other piece in regards to sure that appropriate protections are there to ensure that the councillor that can speak freely, wants to speak freely within the in-camera session based on a particular item, isn't now putting themselves at risk in a taped conversation or taped session that could at some point find itself in the public domain.
I'd want to emphasize that the purpose generally of in-camera meetings is to provide secrecy for the council's deliberations as a council, i.e. so that matters do not leak, essentially, to the public, where there are interests that can only be protected by that necessary secrecy. It is not, the in-camera allowance as an exception to open public meetings for those specific reasons is not intended to allow councillors license in terms of the language that they use or the things that they say. It's merely intended to allow council to deliberate privately, but nevertheless, things that are said there are said before council and are in public from the point of view of looking at, for example, an issue of libel. That's a public communication when you speak to your fellow councillors in that context. So, you know, I would want to emphasize that while I understand your concern, the concern should relate to the deliberations themselves and not to personal liability for things said, where in cameras like any other session of council.
Appreciate that. And last question I have was, you talked about the bills. One of the, I'm sure it's on the council's table, I've highlighted in the past, I always found that the bills, the descriptors, the explanatory reports, that should be fixed to those bills so that it's clear what those bills are about. It's all subtle. Sometimes the descriptors of those bills, especially to the audience, is not all that comprehensive for the general public understanding in some cases. We have found where we've had to make amendments on bills that have passed because we had dealt or tabled during the actual report during the course of the meeting. So I appreciate your contact. I was just looking at, if you identified any other ways to improve on that particular piece.
It's interesting. The question of, right, the public understanding of legislation is always a super-difficult one. As much help as we want to give the public, I don't know, you know, and obviously, the city solicitors department knows vastly more about these areas of municipal law than I do as a non-expert, right? But what I would say is, right, I do know my way around interpreting legislation, and certainly, anything appended to bylaws, especially in their published version, anything that was done, you know, in documentary form as well, forms part of the legislative history, which can be used to further interpret these things. Sometimes, often, council, through you, Madam Chair, it actually serves to muddy the waters, to have a carefully-thought-out bill be appended with additional explanatory material that may or, that often may serve to make the legislative impact and the intention less clear rather than more clear. Often, well-drafted bylaws speak for themselves. However, very clearly, to have such material available, because it does form part of the legislative history regardless, as well as all your public deliberations form part of the legislative history, it can be useful to have that be available. The question of how official it would be when presented in particular forms is another issue. At the end of the day, I suspect that there may be some reluctance to putting too much into bills themselves, especially as preamble or language, which can create additional ambiguity when you're seeking only to resolve it.
Appreciate that.
Hate to be so loyally.
Any further questions with the presenter? Seeing none then, thank you, Craig. May I motion to repeat, break the stage, 500 seconds. Second, Counselor Partridge, on David, thank you. And with that, your term on the delegation process today, your presentations. So I can see we have a discussion under the force, 8.1, as regards specific rings for members of city councils. CL1 says 004. It was referred by council on June 14th. The report was completed on 8/30th to the Governance Review Subcommittee for Discussion. So with that, I, who's not here? Who's that? I'm here for her. Sorry, I know. Our pal is also here in attendance to answer any questions. So questions, Counselor Wadehead?
Ms. President, I actually believe by the one that actually tabled the Senate's Patrick Gubings. It's always my view that we, first of all, I think it's honorable to serve and it's humbling to serve, and I think that any cost that recognize that service, publishing form by the individual and not by the taxpayer. So I strongly recommend that we can start a program where at the beginning of every term, and have to decide on for sign by or not sign on, where they're making whatever appropriated just dollar amount would be to come off their payroll, and that will only be for one term, because we know that you can capture that price in four years very easily and very miniscule amount of money to come off the check for that four years. Once you load that reserve, so the first term, the first term of every council coming in, they could choose to participate in that program, or they could choose not to. If they choose to participate, they make that contribution and pull the first four years. If they're elected, they've already paid, and you keep cycling that. So that account will be repaid. I also believe from a ceremonial point of view, it is a great honor when you get elected by the majority of your residents, and when you have that first meeting, the, it's probably the inauguration meeting, I think that if the rings were going to be presented, that probably would be the ideal time to say, look, congratulations, here's a ring. But you build up that account over time. You've got the front end, and you can pay continually if you embark on that kind of program. So that was my thoughts, just for discussion. I like the idea, I think, and many other committees, by the way, do provide some form of recognition of councillors with rings in front or so forth. So I'm not suggesting tax evasion gives them up. I think that it's a miniscule cost that could be built into salaries of the councillors when they're elected.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and just a couple of questions for staff. I have to admit, when this first was raised around this council table, I had no idea that we didn't do this. It was kind of a surprise to me. But my question to you to staff, how long have we been providing rings for ongoing councillors?
Madam Chair, practice that was continued from the authorities. Several authorities had a policy for, so it provided to retiring or non-retiring councillors and councillors. So that practice was continued, and with all the intent that it would be a policy that would be not available, it would be a simple challenge.
Okay, thank you. I must say, I'm quite surprised by that, quite honestly, but, you know, I'm leaning towards what the previous speaker has indicated. Me personally, myself, I have to say, you know, I love my community and the service that I'm doing as a councillor is fabulous, and I absolutely love it. But I have more than enough rings to be quite honest with you. Every time someone passes away in the family, there's a share of the rings that we will. So I really don't think I'm disappointing this. So I would like to answer, but like I say, have we done it recently? I mean, is this something that we have been doing for the past term and terms before that?
Madam Chair, the, the, the temporary manager from the previous term of council had democracy and friends. That's why the policy came, the programs to get approval to continue that practice.
So what, and to you, Madam Chair, why didn't they get it? It is a existing policy in the practice that we have. Why, why, why did that not happen?
Madam Chair, it was always the intent of the governance committee would consolidate that policy, and we finally got it before the committee were broken down. It's taken us a while on the 19th of August, but it was a decision that the policy would come for this term, for the previous term of council.
Okay, thank you. So if I understand it correctly, just to clarify, we did not have it before us as governance committee in the last term of council, it was not dealt with, but it had been dealt with prior to that?
Madam Chair, yes, the practice that was continued from the authorities. It was addressed by the governance committee, can't remember the date, that it would be reviewed, brought forward to this committee, right, to be brought forward for this term.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Counselor Wadehead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question to Rose, Alice. Do you know if staff receive gifts for years of service, intermission for years of service?
Madam Chair, not totally positive. It's probably a better question for community resources. I know for myself, for any corporate services, I need retired members, there's no gift that I...
So to you, Madam Chair, I wasn't thinking of retiring members, I was thinking of, is there something for a 10-year of service, 15 years of service, or 20 years of service, that kind of thing, the sort of benchmarks of service?
My apologies, Madam Chair. Yes, there are, for employee, October is for recognition, and there is years of service, token of appreciation for monstons, five, 10, 25 years of service, there are some token of appreciation for those years, yes.
Which comes out of the corporate budget.
Correct.
Good. So I think that what I want to say here is that it is a service. It is a service that an elected official gives to the community, and that is great honor. I think that as a retiring, whether you retire on your own or whether you are retired through an election process, I think that a keepsake is something that is special and that some people, anyway, would really enjoy. On the other hand, I certainly understand that it's an amount of money that comes out of our tax base, as does gifts to staff or recognition of years of service. And so that recognition in and of itself is important. I'm not in any way, shape, or form objecting to councillors buying their own ring or another choice of something. If the ring has the city crestle, maybe they can choose to have a necklace if they don't wear a ring, or a pin or something. But I think that the opportunity to have a keepsake that would be particular to an elected official is important. So I do know that as a federal... So I do know that as a federal elected official, when you go into office, you get a pin and you wear it, and that's how they know that you're an elected member of parliament and able to go beyond, you have certain privileges that a normal citizen wouldn't have. And so when you are beyond your term of service, you retain that pin. And you can wear it and you're still allowed into some of those places that the rest of us are not allowed into as a privilege for your term and your service to the country. I can't say that I know that about the provincial legislature, but I do know that about the federal correspondents and how they work. And the pin or the ring that a city councillor would get would not give you any special privilege beyond a regular taxpayer, once you're out of office. But it is a reminder, and it is something that people might cherish as a, to remember their time on council and the time that they spent serving their community and the honor they felt in doing that. So I'm torn. But, you know, right now, we're trying to be a lean organization. I mean, we are working toward, we're now working through a budget that requires us to find savings. And so at a time like this, I think that to decide that the taxpayers should provide us with a gift doesn't have a perception of good stewardship of the money. So I am certainly willing to support a motion to look at ways in which councillors could participate in the purchase of that memento at the end of the, sorry, at the end of their term, whether that's an opportunity to purchase it over time, repay all deductions, or whether that's an opportunity to write a check at the end of the term. I think that I would not like to see the opportunity for a councillor to have something special that only people who are elected in this position have to save for whatever purpose people save mementos in the future. I mean, I'd like to see that stopped, but I am certainly willing to support a move toward giving a councillor an opportunity to participate in the purchase of that. So I'm just going to wait and see what the rest of my colleagues have to say beyond that, but I, I think that we need to be sensitive to the time that we're in and position on behalf, so, thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers. I would like to speak on this. I'll pass to Chair of the Councillor Partridge.
Go ahead, please.
So it has been an interesting debate, and I will, right off the bat, at Madison and Stone Creek, we got our rings not quite when we were elected. We made the decision, as I was elected in '91. It wasn't the first term, I believe it was the second term, where it was decided that all the councillors would have the rings while they were in office. And I cherish, not anything will happen today, but I do cherish it. It's a simple gold with the City Crestle. So that was given at the beginning of the term, or, and as I first thought, I left it at a certain point. And I will also say that at the end of the term, I was presented with a watch from the Mayor of Stone Creek that has a game City Crestle watch, a game that something that certainly been treasured. I do understand, reject the memory, we just had honorary since Stone Creek, we weren't, you know, on salary basis, but I do recognize the concerns and certainly the expense to taxpayers. But I do believe that there are councillors that would really like to have this and, you know, it's a memento of the time they put in. But I've always said, I'd rather have the ring now than when I retire, because this is the time I'm proud to wear it as a city councillor than I have a city council ring. So I certainly, going forward, I have no problem with the suggestion that, you know, is when you re-elected or when you're elected, that you approach finance or the clerks and say you're looking, you're prepared to contribute, say, so much for your first year. And that I, though, would go a little further than Councillor Wainhead saying that if you contribute, say, the first year of the term, that you don't get it till four years later. I would say you get it once you pay for it, because that would also be something that the clerks department has to look at. Janet and I spoke about this, is you have to remember that in order to do that guide cast, it gets very expensive when you're only getting one or two, and they're not knowing how many are coming along, so you have to have a better idea. So you have to look at the whole, the whole picture on here. I mean, it can cost $1,000 for one ring. It can cost about, I think we priced them, because we came up with a very simple, it's a City Hamilton Crestle, it's a simple gold band, is about 300, I think, the price of gold, Janet, do you remember? 350, 350, 500, 600, so it's a price of gold, but that's what has been looked at. So going forward, I certainly have no problem with if the recommendations were forward that, you know, with the wish of the council member elected wanting to contribute, that once it's contributed, paid for, that they should get the ring. So I'm not sure, I'll take the chair back, I'll give it to some new members, if somebody would like to move that forward or whatever.
Councillor Barry.
Thank you. I'll move that. I'll move that members of council have the opportunity to purchase a commemorative ring and that, once it's paid for, whether that's, I don't know if this goes in the motion, but whether that's, you know, over time or whether that's just a check, that they have the opportunity, that they can have the ring and they can wear it, and that that ring would be, that ring would be specific for councillors and the mayor, of course, but for Hamilton, the City Hamilton councillors. And you think that you said anything more in it?
Madam Chair, I believe it's one of the annual deductions, if that's what you're thinking of what you're doing, then we should have staff report back, just as we have the computer budget plan for employees. I believe that our house probably will be some...
Please, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, the recommendation as councillor, that you suggested, but there's no tax deduction, but location, because you're paying for it upfront and then you're going to provide it. If it was the other way around, if you wanted to provide the councillor the ring first, then the annual deductions, and that would be considered a little bit the tax deduction for location.
And so through you, Madam Chair, to our, just, if we were to give the councillor the choice, does it have to be something else in the motion? Or can they just work that out with HR or finance?
Did they pay for it all at once or did they pay it on payroll and it's such a...
Yeah, so if there was anything else in this motion that talks about, I don't need to say that staff needs to report back on anything?
No, I think the motion is, is probably, if, if certainly we get modeled, CRA would see that we have the recommendation that we support that it's not tax.
Thank you very much. So it's moved and seconded. Moved by councillor Arnie Van Der Beek, sorry, seconded by councillor Judy Partridge. Moved by councillor Arnie Van Der Beek, seconded by councillor Judy Partridge. On favor. Very. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Arnie. Okay, now we're going to move on to, we have before us, is eight-two, this correspondence from Gordon Fussell, executive director, Hamilton Waterfront Trust, respecting Hamilton Waterfront Trust board trustees. It's a motion that they put forward, increasing the number of appointees to City Council from four to five, and this was referred by council in August of 2018 to Government's Review Subcommittee. So the correspondence is before you, and I heard Tinko, councillor Farah, I think you're here as a, as a waterfront trust member, go ahead.
This is the, I believe the secondary promotion is before us from Hamilton Waterfront Trust, and I appreciate the time. I just have a, I think one question for Mr. Kine, who's behind this. But just to make clear for the record, this communicated from the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, August 3, 2017. Basically emphasizes a few things that most of you already know. We started our life in 2006.3 million as a trust. We were to invest, for the most part, capital investments. That 6.3 little mandate that we leveraged to about $22 million in expenditures over many years, up until about a few years ago. And that's referenced here. It's also mentioned in the therefore's that the waterfront trust is restructured after some amicable productive meetings with the CRA. We are no longer what we were for most of that time. We're now, for the most part, an offer profit, with two business units or organizations that we've called Hamilton Waterfront Trust, Inc., and William's Fresh Cafe is an example, the Waterfront Trust Center, or former Discovery Center, and the amenities that we did manage once not too long ago, and there would have been also under Inc. We emphasize what's before you here today, Madam Chair, that we have an opportunity now because of the changes to restructure, and that's what we look to do, that's what we seek to do here, and that's why it's at every, this governance committee, because our own governance looks at a new board alignment. The new board would be appointed on the basis of five appointees by the City of Hamilton, no appointees from the court authority, and the Hamilton Waterfront Trust Board requests that the HWA and the City of Hamilton approve. We're looking for approval from both the new appointees process that is before us. So I may have two questions. So through you, by an eight-two, Mr. Kine, he is here, right?
Besides the Kine.
In your expertise, sort of, what do they, do they, I get your name, huh?
Yeah, it's K instead of H, K Y A D.
Oh. Kind. Kind, right? The eight-point-two, Roman numeral I, the, we reference, we seek HWA's approval, understanding our deed and our governance model as you do, through you, Chair. Is, I just want to make it clear for my own mind, is Hamilton Court Authority approval required, considering the motion, what it asked the support from the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, through you?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, it is.
Okay, so they have a number of conditions, and we would need to, at the appropriate time, take into that account, and when I say we, the Hamilton Waterfront Trust Board Contractors, we would need to take into those conditions. For example, they're asking for a special resolution, they ask indemnification, past and present, those sorts of things, in order to agree to this new board structure. So we would need their approval for you? We would need to meet those conditions for you? Mr. Kine?
Through you, Madam Chair, I guess you would, a case in the hand that the city approval, independent of waterfront trust approval, is also required.
Well, I understand that, but it's both city approval and Hamilton Court Authority approval that's required to get us where we want to be with respect to the motion before us, through you?
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, look at that, my five minutes is already up, but I'm asking questions. Through you, two things, respecting our deed, which established us in the first place, and it offers our board makeup that we have now, and what we're asking for. It references, obviously, the court appointment. There's two points, and I'm not certain where to go on this. I should probably join the governance committee, and I would be uncertain, but you do great work, and you may not want me on this committee, but I need clarity, and this is the best place to get it. Number one, following an amicable productive series of discussions with CRA, our structure has changed, our business units, et cetera, no longer in terrible status, now we have this offer profit status, number one. And that's number one, number two, the motion before us, our trust, given its life of $6 million, we leveraged it to $22, but that's all gone. So the big part of the deed was working that $6 million into fulfilling that mandate of bringing people to the water. We've been hugely successful, not only leveraging the $22 million worth of most of the capital projects, but bringing millions and millions of people to a place where you can get a lot of water for the year, I suppose. So all that's great, but respecting the governance and this deed, putting the two together, and now two significant differences, no doe as we were, as we had when we launched the 6.3, and different recognizable features with respect to our business units. I'm just wondering, if it's an in-camera, if we were to, do we need to change the deed through you, Chair? If we do, is that a contractual matter that we would have? And if we were to have it, would it be here? How would that work, through you, Chair, Mr. Kine?
Through you, Madam Chair, one of the conditions which the HWA is imposed on its agreement to remove itself from the board is that it's named removed from the trustee. So it's requiring revision to the trustee in any event. In addition to that, for some of the reasons that you mentioned, the passage of 17 years, a change in the structure of the HWT, the fact that the original trust funds on which the trust were based have now been expended, and that there are other sources of income, it's a prudent matter from the business management perspective to review the trustee and see if it's still germane and specific in regard to the HWT's brand of security.
Okay, great, and through your board, members of Hamilton Waterfront Trust, as well as the council, are trying to get a better understanding. So through you, to Mr. Kine, when and where would that prudent work occur?
So if I can mention, through you, Madam Chair, I don't know what actor is there. Councillors would be aware that there was a motion passed, that I told you, GIC, by council, whereby members of staff were, were recognition, had discussions with the HWT regarding mutual issues, and the future reporting back on December 6th was in the future of GIC. Those discussions are ongoing, and the report, as suggested, is targeting December 6th, although it may be that not all the work is done at that point, we will see. To councillor Farah's question as to where that work should be done, the suggestion is that we should await the outcome of those larger discussions and then decide what specific changes staff would recommend to the trustee for consideration by this committee or whatever other committee you think is, should be sent to.
Okay, okay, good. I, I'm, it's much clearer for me now. So today, we would receive, through you, Chair, the correspondence from Hamilton Waterfront Trust, and ultimately the attached correspondence, eight-two, Roman numeral I, from the Hamilton Court Authority, that's simply all we will do through you, Mr. Kine, is that what we're doing here today? And then we'll deal with the matter following the December 6th GIC presentation.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's suggestions, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Barry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so through you, to staff, or to Mr. Kine, I think what I'm hearing is that we should be receiving this and deferring it to the next general governance meeting. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Presumably, Madam Chair, presumably, the next meeting would be in the new year, and so the report would already have come to the December 6th meeting, and that should cover it off, correct? And then we can take what comes to, staff report comes to December 6th meeting and refer it to the next governance committee meeting to be discussed with this?
Through you, Madam Chair, without trying to be too vague about it, the report on December 6th may fully resolve the outstanding issue with the trust, or may result in council direction to go back and deal with subsequent issues or other related issues. So from that perspective, we'll have a clearer picture on December 6th. At this point, we can't guarantee we will have the full resolution on December 6th. So from that perspective, we think it prudent to defer this issue until we have that ready to clarify. Does that assist with the council?
Thank you. So at the appropriate time, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Wain.
Yeah, I'm a bit confused, because I was there when this was negotiated with the government after the machine at the time, and this was contemplated to be sunset, where you have, here's your money, do the best you can, once it's spent, move on. So I'm trying to understand, unless waterfront trust feel they have risk and liability based upon the path... based upon the past, is that all this is suggesting, clean up, to make sure that there's no ongoing risk in respect to the original form of the Waterfront Trust, that's great?
Through you, Madam Chair. Risk is not the primary driver, and, and, and just to clarify what may be an obvious point, we're providing advice with the perspective, the city, the trust, of course, is maybe any corporation takes its own advice with respect to the risk that it is facing. What we're suggesting is that, given that the HBA has now alerted us to the fact that if you want, if the trust wants its representative removed from the board of trustees, one of the conditions it imposes is that the trustee be revised. We think, having seen that, and in the context that all that is going on with the trust, that's a prudent trigger to look at some other revisions that may or may not be needed. So it's an opportune time to look at a seventeen-year-old occupancy that's still pertinent to the city's present and future relationship with the trust.
Okay, because the, my, my current understanding is that the Waterfront Trust is more of a contract provider for the city in regards to programming than it is anything to do with the water, so, uh, sure, with the, the court authority. So what was intended is now expired, but hasn't formally been expired through the, I would not think that fourth and final year was over, it should have shut, shut, shut its doors and reestablish itself as something new, because really is predominantly general manager of contracts and services along the, the waterfront, which has nothing to do with the court authority. So I'm trying to understand, these days, these days can clean up very quickly. You can close that one half, jack away all revenue, and you're indicating that a lot more due diligence is needed, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not convinced that a lot more due diligence may be done. What I'm suggesting is it's an opportune time to review the relationship between the city and the trust going forward. The foundational document for the relationship between the trust and the city is the trustee deed. The original trust funds have been expended, but the trust is still operating and still has developed other sources of income, not all of which may be reflected in the trustee deed. So what we're discussing here is a modernization of the relationship between the city and the trust going forward, which is prompted in part, not only by the direction from council on October twenty-second, but also by the trust motion requesting that the court authority remove itself from the governance of the trust.
So at what point, time-wise, can we expect us to confirm this new governance model?
Through you, Madam Chair, as I suggested, if, if this committee agrees, and, and the council agrees, that the issue be deferred until we have great clarity, the clarity with respect to the future relationship between trust and city. And as I said, we expect at least the first report on that to occur on December sixth, at which time we'll have some great clarity.
Okay, thank you.
Council, first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The risk is sounding rude, who are you?
That's the first question. I'm a lawyer with the city of Hamilton, maybe anybody who was.
Oh, you're with the city, I had a sense you made it with the court authority. Okay, so you're, I mean.
So I'm here in place of the whole audience, I have carried in this manner behalf of the legal department.
Oh, perfect, okay. So you work for the city, I appreciate that. So what I would call, Madam Chair, is that we do defer, as I agree with the council and ask for a report back from our legal department, with very specific recommendations of what you're looking for, because it seems to be the same here, I don't understand it, and I'd like to get a report from our own legal department in running in front of the so we can see the recommendations, understand and look forward. So I would love to second counsel, and with the president. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, with your part.
And again, it's the Waterfront Trust, board member on the side, speaking to you here today, we fully support that concept, so I'm glad it's being identified.
Thank you, appreciate that, certainly the importance of making sure we clean up all, all tie up all of these ends moving forward. So with that, I'll turn to council, and with your motions to defer this, and ask for the staff report addressed in several, the Hamilton Waterfront, for the issue of December seventh.
Jen Scott. Jen Scott, Jen Scott. And Jen, did you hit the end of it where the staff report back on specific recommendations about removing someone from the court authority and replacing it with someone from the city?
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe the report that's going to GIC is supposed to cover those matters, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, not specifically. So the, I have the resolution here that rose up at GIC on October twenty, and it's fairly general staff directive to meet with Waterfront Trust representatives to develop options of mutual interest when we go back to GIC by December sixth.
And so through you, Madam Chair, so that would mean that they would have done the report to December sixth, and then staff should be able to come back to us with some pretty specific recommendations at our next general governance committee meeting?
Yes, I think you have that.
Okay.
And that reflects the change in the structure from four plus one to five appointed by the city council, correct?
Removing the, the court authority and replacing it with the city council.
So I'm going to say that, motions on the floor, seconded by Council Ferguson, Council Ferguson question.
And the question is, this is, I didn't know much for it, now I'm seeing the middle view. So this is, this is going to GIC on the sixth, not to the court authority, or not to the Waterfront Trust, it's going to GIC, so is there any need particularly back there then?
Through you, Madam Chair, there's actually two pieces of staff, we're moving on, if you like, parallel tracks. So what is a discussion with HWT representatives with respect to options, that is going to go back to GIC on the sixth? This inevitably came to governance committee, because it was initiated by the trust to remove the court authority member from the board, and necessarily require city's input. So as I said, we're on two somewhat parallel tracks. The suggestion, and I think the motion reflects it, the pending resolution reflects it, is that we see what the outcome is of the December sixth report, before we come back and report to you with respect to not bringing this with your last, but the related due diligence.
Thank you.
So everyone understands, is the move is that in all favor? Next, we're moving on to, what is the committee's wish with respect to item eight-point-two, and, oh, sorry, we just have to receive those, correct? So move to receive, item two, eight-two-I, to my council, and second, with the partner in favor, very agree. Item three, is selection process for the election alliance audit committee, CL seventeen dash two, all ten, C Y, any discussions regarding this item in connection? Anyone?
Will you receive, is that right?
Rose, is that our task force, is that some issue, Rose?
Yeah, I'm here with the, it's actually, they wish to keep it as a status quo.
So receiving the status quo. So we're going to move to receive, second, here, council, and with your, all in favor, very, very agree. So it stays status quo, for those who want to be in the term, they think the members, thank you, thank you. All in favor, very, very, thank you, everyone. Eight-point-four is the virtual meetings, CL one-six-zero-zero-one-A, C Y, any discussions on this item, very interesting, as well. And Rose and Janet, council provide information with regards to this matter. So this is the virtual meetings. Any questions, council?
As I understand, the recommendation is that, just that we can ask that report back, and that the virtual meeting only for the Hamilton Youth Advisory Committee, is that correct? Was it a good, compared to the council?
Madam Chair, this was a standing business item on our, on the agenda. It was prompted through a motion to contest how the ASB and Health and Youth Advisory can do different residents, such as the Trump participation. So it was held on our standing business, because the community service committee was reviewing the status of the Youth Advisory Committee. They did do a recent report, actually, that council received in October, in October, which the council agreed to stand, that actual county Youth Advisory Committee itself, and organizing into a different type of entity. But we just wanted to clean up our standing business, because now that has been, that part of it has been taken care of. And also to note to the committee that revisions to the municipal act now do allow, will be allowed the electronic participation if a municipality so chooses, you would put that part of it into the procedural law. You know, you probably have said, electronic participation of a council member or a committee member does not count for form purposes, and could not be included in the countercession of that.
Okay, so that's already calling in place, it allows a member of council to use qualification or offset, go our way to Congress, be able to Skype in and clarify his vote, is that how it would work?
Madam Chair, no, we cannot be counted for voting for anonymous purposes, you're going to be part of this.
I heard, or, I said, yeah, voting card.
Yeah, not for voting either, that's further the change of status.
Is it, is it, I prefer a rumor, I meant to check my trustee, is the Hamilton School Board, now trustees can Skype in and vote?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm not familiar with that.
So this, in this kind of advantage, I don't think you could be Skyped in up on the screen, and see your handle up, and say yes or no, but I'm opposed to Jason, I have five minutes left of time. So you were not there yet?
No.
Okay.
So with that, and, sorry, GIC, my council Ferguson, my council, on favor, and, and your mind, for, for, should we have, the motion presented, so most of the votes presented, we can leave for our, for our, for our, and did we introduce them?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, thank you very much, but I do have, removed by myself, and seconded by Council Ferguson, but I do have a question for Madam Clerk, if I may. First of all, I do have an amendment to this motion, so do I put the motion on the floor as it is, and then amend it?
You can actually introduce your motion now, but then you.
In, in it already. Okay, all right, all right, I will do that, and thank you. So it is moved by myself and seconded by Council Lloyd Ferguson, Queens Park League Transit Liaison Committee, that city council approve a council team, a Queens Park Transit Liaison Committee, consisting of councillors Chad Collins, Lloyd Ferguson, Sam Barilla, Terry Whitehead, Maria Pearson, and I have myself in here as well, to be a working committee of council on all related provincial transit matters affecting the residents of Hamilton. And if I may, the amendment that I would like to make, and you tell me whether this is appropriate or not, when I first introduced this motion, I had not been nominated or accepted the nomination to run in the provincial election for the Liberals, but now that I have, I just don't feel that it would be appropriate for me to be part of this committee, but she tell me if that's right or wrong? Or if there's any rules around that?
Are you considering it being a conflict?
Well, well, it could be.
Which I can't give advice on.
So I'll, so I'll just, I'll just take my own gut feel and, and advice on this, and I would, the amendment I would make is to remove myself from this committee. And if I can speak to it? Yes, council, and I'm just waiting to ask, so that we're going to clarify, then, that this, the meeting consists of Council Chad Collins, Council Lloyd Ferguson, Council Sam Barilla, Council Terry Whitehead, and myself. Yes, thank you. Thank you. And if I may, if I may speak to it, I mean, certainly, the people that are named in this, if, if there was someone else that would like to be a part of it, then, you know, certainly, we would be open to it. But the reason that I put this motion forward, I'm going to talk about the need, I'm going to talk about the benefit, and I'm going to talk about the importance of the partnership that we have with, with the province. And, you know, I really feel that there is a need for us to have a transit liaison committee that can work directly with the ministers that, that would be involved in this. And the reason that I say that, the benefit, I guess, that I see to that is, you know, the, the two issues that are going to have the most importance and impact on our city going forward are transit and also our climate change, and they are so much, they are related. But, you know, I think, looking at what happened in the past with the LRT, on again, off again, off again, on again, you know, I just feel that if we had had a liaison committee that could have been involved in those early discussions, then, as a city, it would be better for us to be able to plan long-term. We're now looking at regional transit, we, we had it, you know, in our committee meeting this morning, with our joint Burlington-Hamilton Subcommittee, the talk was centered around how the regional transit issue was going to be of great importance, and the province plays a pivotal role in that. And I, and I just believe that we really need to have a liaison team that could get up in front of the long-term planning, that we need to have, that is so critical for our, our, our transit in, in the southern Ontario region, but, you know, there's discussions that are, that could be going on at Queens Park, that we're not aware of, and this is about planning for our city, and I really feel that we need to, we need to take an active role in that, and a proactive role in that. We do have two committees set up right now, where, you know, certainly, GIC, which receives updates on, on transit, and we do have staff who have a working group, working with Metro Kings and others, but we do not have a committee of councillors that can be proactively working with Queens Park on this issue. So that, Madam Chair, is why I am putting this forward, and I do hope that nine committee members will support it. Thank you. Counsel, and with your.
Thank you. So, through you, to, I don't know who, maybe, to Council Ferguson, just remember the motion, where's the province on this? So have, has there been any conversation with the province about whether they're willing to deal with another group? I don't really have, there's no, there's no back-end agenda to my question, I, I'm just wondering if, if there's been any discussion of whether we've approached them, or asked them if they're interested in talking to a committee of council?
Well, I don't think it's a question of whether we need to consult with them, this council makes motions and decides on how they would like to approach things, and that is the approach that I'm taking. It is really up to this council to decide if, you know, there is importance in this transit liaison committee, as I believe that there is, and, you know, that direction will come out of this council.
So I'm not really questioning that, I, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering whether there had been any discussion of working with the ministry directly through a liaison committee of council, so I guess, another question I had is, will this working committee have any staff involved with it?
So, my understanding, and perhaps Madam Clerk can, can address this, but, you know, this, this liaison committee can come up with their terms of reference, but I see this as a working committee that works with, with Queens Park, so it's, you know, not that it needs here, and Queens Park has to come here, I think the committee would need to figure that out, and I certainly didn't want to prescribe it. As far as, have I had conversations with, with ministers down in Queens Park? No, I, I haven't, because quite honestly, the motion comes out of this council. If this council has no interest in it, then they would go against it. If you do see value in it, and if you do have interest in it, then they would move it just as we move lots of other motions that direct this council to work directly with the province on other issues. That answers the question.
Thank you. Generally, because I, I, I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not, not, not supportive of it, I just, just looking for a little more information about, for, what's been done, like, what is the expectation, so it's fine, I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, I think the expectation is that the committee will have to come up with how they want to approach this, just as we do when we form any new committees. This is a liaison committee, you can call it a task force if you want to, but it, it is not intended to be a subcommittee of of council that meets on a monthly basis. The, you know, I think the counselors will need to decide how often those meetings take place, when they take place, and what the subjects are. Because right now, there's a number of regional transit issues. We have the LRT issue, which is a huge issue, and yes, we do have a subcommittee that deals with them, but it's to receive information that's already been decided. I want this committee to have the opportunity to be part of that proactive discussion upfront on where are we going with transit, not just immediately, but in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. Why is it going to look like in partnership with the province? Because we have, we have that partnership right now, but I, I question whether it's a working partnership in the true sense of the word, or if it's just a partnership where we are receiving direction and receiving decisions as opposed to being part of those decisions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I just have a question. Is this committee where this motion belongs, or shouldn't it go to GIC?
It was at GIC, it was for the first.
It was at GIC?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're.
Came out way back, if I can just interject, it came out way back, when we dealt, when we dealt, we're dealing with the LRT and the LRT subcommittee, Counselor Parker put the motion on the floor.
Okay, I didn't remember that, but thank you.
Okay. Okay. So is everybody understanding now? It's moved by Counselor Parker, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, all in favor?
Very.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, and with that, now, we have, we have known, know this is a motion, and we have our internal information and other business outstanding business list before you. Sorry, just going to go to it. I have a mover to remove items eleven, one, A, A, B, C, D, E, F. Move by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, all in favor?
Very.
Can I just, hang on, I just want to ask a question, Janet, and should that be on the outstanding business list? And I just, for all intents, because this is probably the last meeting that governance will have this term?
This.
This year, sorry, this year. This year. So I want to thank Janet for working so diligently, because she has really worked hard to get all of these items period on the outstanding businesses. This will, we come in with a brand-new blank page in the new year. So thank you very, very much, and most of all, staff that certainly worked with Janet and all the departments in there. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Ferguson, all in favor? Harry, thank you, everyone. I think this is the first subcommittee that thinks they have absolutely nothing left to handle here. Bonus.
There you go.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
It came up during our dinner meetings, exactly. It must be something to bring the, like, the.